Educating, informing, serving. Fact TV, keeping government honest.
So I called the meeting for order on Tuesday at 6:00 PM on February 16th, 2021. Before we start on the agenda, there is, the next meeting is not the 15th, it's March 1st. So make that correction on your agenda. So we need a motion to adopt the agenda as corrected, I guess.
I'm moved.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close? Okay. The minutes, so we need to do the minutes of February 1st. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes?
I've got a couple, Joe.
Go ahead, John.
On page two, number seven, at the end of the second line, it says, "The select board acknowledged this offer," no, I'm sorry, the third line, "but the details were no solidified."
Right.
Is that right?
Where are you?
Third, end of the third line on page two, on number seven.
Probably should be not.
Okay.
I don't know where you are. I, third line, what, what, what number, number seven?
Number seven.
Okay.
It starts with the details.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, not?
Well, should say not, right?
Yeah.
And on page three.
Three?
Page three, it's, it's, it's two, four, six, eight, 10th line down.
I don't have a page three.
I don't have page three either, John.
What number, what paragraph?
First, second paragraph.
What number?
On the Village Park. Village Park sign at entrance. At the end of that, he would take them from the sign with the six by six posts. You see that? If I get different minutes than everybody else.
No, on number seven, Village Park, where are you in number seven?
On page three, to me, it's.
I don't have a page three, John.
You're in a page three, John. So is it in one of the dots under it, or?
Yeah.
He would then?
He would then from the sign.
Well, he would then form the signs.
Yeah, right. Yep, I got that too.
Okay.
And the other one is on the last page.
Actually, that's not either. It was closer to from, it was frame, frame the signs.
And on the, on the last page, the date of the next select board meeting should be the 16th or 7/15.
Well, at the time we did it, we thought it was the 16th, so.
Right.
Okay, I'll change that though. Yep.
Are there any others? Danny, you have any others?
Only, I've only got one. John got everything else. On paragraph eight, on the second page, about halfway down, it's after, it says, "About including in the application, the trail," and it was on about Al Sands mentioned, "from the parking, and," I think that should be.
That area.
Area, area, that's what I have, area, yes. Yep, that's it. John got them all.
Are there, are there no others? If there were no others, somebody make a motion to accept the minutes of February 1st as amended?
I'm moved.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? If not, all in favor of the minutes of February 1st as amended, say aye.
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 Opposed? Okay. All right, the warrants, I guess, I guess they were all signed by everybody, so that's not a problem. And brings us to the highway. Danny, you're here. You have anything, anything to enlighten us about?
I see where Bill has the mileage certificate and overweight permits on there.
Right.
Okay, let me take the mileage certificate first. I gotta make sure, I sent that to you guys last week, correct?
Correct.
You all looked at it? Is everybody happy, everybody happy with it?
Yep.
Yeah, I am.
Okay, I need a motion for you to approve the mileage certificate. So you're approving the mileage and you're approving at the addition of Legal Trail 1788. Let me just say something about that. The person at VTRN really liked that name. I like the name too, but since she liked it so much, and I hope she pushes it through, I left it at Legal Trail 1788, so. And it is the year that it was, it was put in the books.
Hey, Bill, the snowmobile club was happy with that, or had no problems?
They have no problems with it. They don't follow it when it goes by Ellsworth Camp. If in the future, you want to amend that trail to go around his campus, that does, if that's what he asked. But to put it on the map, it needed to go there. And in addition to that, the person working with me at VTRN thought it should, since that's the historic trail and it goes, historically goes past that cabin, it should go there.
Where did that, where did that come from? Who brought that up, that legal trail?
It came from a search that, it came from a map that Devo did that I have here on the wall that shows that it went along there. There was some problems with the roads up there and some problems with people threatening not to allow the bass to go through, so that's why I started looking at it. It's not a question of us adopting a new road. If it's putting a road back that should have been there, legally, it isn't, we're not adopting a new road, legally, we're putting back a road that should have been there. The action that can be taken on that road is to petition to have it removed from the map. Because it is, it should have been on the map. And it is the same road that was, that was put in the town in 1788. And that road comes downs, is the Anderson Road, all the way down to where it meets the Burgess Cemetery Road. It's the Burgess Cemetery Road, all the way across from the Anderson Road, all the way across to the discontinued area at Eastman and up to the cemetery, then out to Otis Road, and then at Otis Road is part of this road, and then it goes up and around. And then it goes down and it ends, well, it goes down, it becomes Middletown Road, it goes down Putnam Forest Road. It is Putnam Forest Road, it is Middletown Road. It is probably Main Street and 121 going east all the way, and then it's Fisher, probably Fisher Hill, and on up. But we didn't bother with confirming all of that because we didn't have to. The only portion of that road that we wanted to put back on the map was from Otis to Putnam Forest Trail.
So that doesn't give us any obligation or anything to that?
Legal trail does nothing. It gives you a 50-foot right away from Otis Road to Putnam in a designated area, but there's no, there's no, no construction or anything that has to be done. And we had some discussion when we were talking about this earlier, was whether or not we could, had to bring it back as, as it was historically, which apparently was a Class 3 road. And VTRN said, no, if in a situation like this, you can bring it back. And they suggested it be brought back as a legal trail, so we don't have any obligation to bring it up to, to great, up to standards.
Okay, if there's no questions, any, any discussion, we need to have a motion to approve the mileage certificate and the addition of LT 1788?
I'm moved.
Okay, so with John, I don't know which was first or second, but John and Sue Allen, I think it was, so.
Second.
Any other discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay.
No, you need, you come in and sign it. Everybody has to come in and sign that certificate.
Right.
Okay, and you need to do it pretty quick, because I gotta, well, by Thursday, because I gotta send it off.
Yeah, so try to get in there tomorrow or Thursday to sign that certificate. It'll be in back in Bill's office.
Yep.
Okay, overweight permits, Bill?
The overweight permits are for, I have the overweight permit with their, with their certificate of insurance, with their $10 fee for their, all their trucks from Carroll Concrete, Barrett, Velco, Renault LLC, and RK Miles from Manchester. There'll be a whole bunch more coming in, but those are the ones I have right now.
Hey, Bill, is that $10 a truck or $10 for all of them?
It's $5 a truck, and then $10 for a fleet. For instance, RK Miles is probably 20 lumber trucks, you know, with the, with the kind with the crane built on the truck, that type of truck.
So they sent you $100?
No, they, it's $10 for a fleet.
Okay, okay.
Everybody pays the $10. Once in a while, you have one truck.
Okay, so we need a motion to, to accept the permits, and we also need a motion, done the motion to allow Bill to sign them?
Yes.
The TA? Somebody want to make that motion?
I'm moved.
Okay, Kathy, thank you. Do we have a second? Don't want to speak at once.
Second.
Okay, 10 seconds. Do we have any other on the overweight permits? If not?
No, nothing.
Bill, you, you okay? Okay. If not, all in favor, say aye.
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 Close? Okay, good. All right, and Danny, do you have anything else?
One thing I have is the new truck has come in. We've been running it two storms, I guess, now. So that, we have received that finally.
You had an issue with it, they did not?
First trip out, it had an engine light come on, it had a bad sensor in it that they changed. It's really not uncommon, like, I mean, we deal with it with all of them, with all the electronics, but yeah, first time out, about 50 miles, they had engine light on.
What's the status?
What did it indicate? What was the light for?
Overheat on a turbo. It was a bad sensor on the turbo.
Danny, what's the status of the pickup, you know?
The last one I got, they're still working on it. Sounds like they're having a little bit of a hard time getting all the parts, which we've have, we've run into that a little bit, just on some of the plow edges and stuff too. It's just, you know, the inventory is getting down on everybody with the whole COVID going on. So that was the last, I had that message about a week ago, that they're waiting on parts.
Anybody have anything else for Danny?
Hi, it's Wendy. Can I say something to Danny?
Go ahead.
Yep.
Um, maybe you can guess what I'm gonna say. Can you?
I know. The new truck, it's a little different, and I didn't get the sander shut off in time for you.
Yeah, I scraped it all up this afternoon, but I can't keep doing that. I'm gonna kill myself, so I'd really appreciate if you could, yeah, thanks. Or just don't do anything at all. Don't, don't plow it or anything.
The town road, we have to maintain it.
I know, I'm kidding, I'm kidding. So, thanks.
Danny?
Yeah?
Did Bill mention that you've got a sign in the office? It came by UPS on Thursday.
Okay, I've been waiting for that.
Yeah, it's, it's there.
Okay.
Hey Danny, I got one question. The kid that destroyed all our signs on Fisher Hill, has that all been settled?
Uh, he did all his hours. I called his officer, the, that was handling that, and sent him an email, and I never heard any more about, but yes, he did his hours.
Did he do his hours to town?
What's that?
Did he do his hours here in town?
Yes, he did.
He did? Okay, because I thought there was a question about that at one time, but.
No, he did them all. He did them all, cleaning bridges off. He did all the ones down on Eastman, the side roads down there, there's a couple bridges. And then he did the Cambridge Port Bridge, bridge in front of your driveway, the one up a little bit further by Lakes driveway. I don't think he ever did the Fisher Bridge.
Yeah, he did, he did, Danny. I remember now seeing a guy. Yeah, I remember seeing a guy shoveling out there, and I wondered what it was.
Yeah, I couldn't remember if he got that one or not. I had a list of, he'd call me every Monday and let me know. And I'd run around and check them.
Did we ever get reimbursement on the signs?
That would come to the office, that I would not know.
Kim, did we ever get reimbursement for that?
Not, not that I'm aware of, no.
Okay, I will check on that.
Okay. Anything else for Danny? For highway? If not, Kim, you're up, clerk and treasurer, go ahead.
I don't have much to report, other than all ballots went out on Friday. So I've been starting to get some of them in. A lot of them are coming in through the door slot, but then I'm getting some in the mail. Thursday's gonna be the first day I've got the BCA, three BCA members coming in to open them up and deposit them into the ballot box. Other than that, taxes have been coming in, we're doing really good on that. Very few late. That's it, unless you guys have any questions.
I have a, I have something that I'd like to add here. I talked to Bill today, and I talked to Kim. We have the pretown meeting coming up, and we kind of thought that it might be a little more professional if we had the pretown meeting at the Brick Meeting House. We could have the select board, if they desire, to social distance. And I believe we could have 25 people come, if they wanted to come in person. We would have the Zoom set up with a screen, or we would have the microphones and all that stuff. So Bill and I, before we finalize the agenda for the pretown meeting, does anybody have any objections or any discussions or any, any thoughts about doing that? Or should we just do the entire meeting on Zoom?
Joe, I have a couple. One of them is, it's very hard to see in there, and it's also very hard to hear, and with people with masks on, you can't read their lips like you could some other time, but I, I just, myself, I don't know how many of the select people will want to meet there, and I myself would just let it go again.
Well, that's okay. We bring it up just, just so that.
That's my, that's my thought.
Yeah, I agree with John on that. I think that's, boy, to be at a, be at a meeting for two hours, or whatever it is, or whatever the period of time is for that, it's hard. We've, we tried that at the beginning, and it just didn't work well. At least, that was my opinion.
Okay, well, that answered the question, so. Okay. So we'll have the, we'll have the, we'll have the pretown meeting via Microsoft team, just like we have a regular meeting, and I don't know how many people are gonna show up, but whatever it is, we'll, we'll, we'll do that. Bill?
Yeah, I just wanted to say, I'll get that, now that that's settled, I'll get the agenda out tomorrow. The agenda will have a link, just like our regular agendas.
Okay.
Have a link to click in, okay?
Okay. Bill, you want the grants?
Uh, yeah, the Homeland Security Grant is a, is a grant that I am applying for, for two things. It has to be terrorism related, it has to protect us from attacks, and cannons and rockets are not on the list, so I don't think we can get those. But we, what we can get is protection for our web, and I don't know why I'm backing up.
I don't either.
Oh, I know why. Well, I don't think I can fix that. The, uh, so what, what we're going to do is ask them to pay for Dominion's upgrade of our firewall, actually putting in a physical firewall and the software to do that, and rewire everything, and bring it all up out of the basement into the office up, up above, and put it in a locked cabinet. That is part of it, that's about 14 grand, and the other part of it is security lights. We feel to begin with, there are two security lights that are recorded, I mean, security cameras that are recorded, one at each end of the town garage, and they will, the one in the front will catch everybody coming in, as well as the, the fuel pump, and the one in back will cover the back of the building. And that's, I got a, I got something today on that, and it's about... It's 1855, and I'm getting another bid tomorrow on that. I have to get three bids. I've got two refusals and a bid on the, on the security work, the bid is from Dominion. There's another possibility, I might get one more bid. And then, and refusals are as good as a bid in FEMA speak. And I've got a refusal, two refusals, and a, and we'll have two bids on the cameras. And I need three altogether. And that, that I have to have finished and to you at our March 1st meeting, so that I can send it up to Homeland, for you to approve it, get it signed, and send it up to Homeland Security by the 5th of March.
For the, for the new, for the new people, we talked about this last year, and one of the recommendations is that our system for the internet and computers and everything else are in the basement, it's old, not safe. So we looked into this thing, and we were gonna get a bid to do it, it was around $6,000 or $7,000, and we didn't have the money, so we put it off, but now we have this opportunity with this grant to do this. Something really needs to be done. It's not something that, that is a luxury, it's, to secure the situation, it needs to be done. It's just time, so hopefully.
I think that's a great use of the money. I have a question for Bill. Bill, when we get refusals, is that because we're so small, or are they just so booked up?
Say again?
She wants to know why we get refusals, Bill, because we're such a small town, or because?
For the very reason that we probably should, we want to go with Dominion in the first place. There are security people, the people I called are the Dominions of the world in Vermont. BC3 and Panergy, both up north. And BC3, I had a really long talk with the fellow, I thought he was gonna permit, get, send us a bid. He called the next day and said, you know, I thought about it. This is a one-off. If we're not gonna have this, if we're not gonna run the system that we build, we don't want it. We don't want to just build it for somebody else, because maybe, maybe they won't like what we did. So you know, it's that type of thing. And, and, and Panergy, her stated reason was they were too far away in Burlington to come and look at it.
Thank you, Bill.
It's very specialized field, and especially for the Dominion has our programs and all of our security already, so they didn't really want to intertwine another security system coming in and not knowing what Dominion has done.
Can I also ask, Bill, on those bids, does it include maintenance of anything that goes wrong, and also anything that comes up that we need to be aware of? Are they gonna charge extra, or is that part of the bid?
The bid is, bid is whatever we put in and they approve. And I'm thinking it would include, in Dominion's bid is a three-year guarantee, so we'll cover that.
Well, plus, we already have a contract with them also, so I'm wondering if that also is included in some of the contracts that we pay with for them already? For maintenance on our computer system for security?
Yep.
Okay, if there are no other questions, then Bill will have, Bill and Kim will have the thing ready for our March 1st meeting. Okay, now, the big issue of the night is the porta potty. Obviously, the foundation wanted it moved, they claim that nobody's using it. So, so the question is, what does the town want to do? Do we want to just pull it and forget it? The bathrooms are closed for the foundation, the bathrooms are closed at the store, so, but whatever. So anyway, go ahead, Bill, you work with it more than.
They said that they, the, Basseptic is the one that put it there, says it's hardly, it's hardly been used in the last month. And you can use, I don't, I haven't tried it, but I've, I've been told that you can go, when they're open, you can go into the tavern and use those bathrooms that are in the barn. I, you know, I don't know. And people have, people who are known to them, like the old timers here in town, have told me that they have asked and have used the bathroom at the store. But the biggest thing is no, no one is using it, it's in the way of snow removal.
Mr. Chair, may I ask a couple? Thank you. So just wondering if what June's point of view is on this removal? And also, secondly, who from the foundation is saying that it should go?
June doesn't want to have a thing to do with it, she told me it's not, but that's not mine, I don't do anything with it, I just run the store. And with regard to, and she has never wanted to have anything to do with the porta potty. She just didn't want to ever hear about it, that was the thing. And, and as far as, at the store, it is the maintenance crew, Carl, wants it gone because it's in the way.
What's it in the way of?
Snow plowing in the back. And, and there's other issues too. It's hard to get back to it from the front, and I don't know how you, I haven't walked back there to see how, what the yield is in the back, but where the sign is in the front, if, if there was no snow there, and after the last two storms, there's a lot of snow there, there's snow coming off the roof, so the people going by there would have to make sure they stayed a long way from that roof. It's in a pretty bad spot.
Well, may not be in a good spot, but I, I still think that there has to be something available, even if it gets moved and back by the town hall somewhere.
I don't know where you put it at town hall without being a way of plowing. The only place I actually talked to, I, where, the only place would not be in the way of plowing is on the front porch.
You can't put it on the side of the building because the snow comes off that roof.
And if you put it right there in front, you would be in the way of where the electric box is on the tower, it'd be in the way.
And that's our only parking area.
Mr. Chair?
Go ahead.
Thank you. Is this a problem just in the winter, or are we gonna feel differently about having an available porta potty for tourists when we start having better weather? And if so, would we consider bringing it back?
And you know, it's hard to, it's hard to answer, we don't know what, we don't know what the future brings, whether the governor will lift the orders, whether the store reopen again, whether the tavern will not have to, I mean, all these things, you know, we're, we're in February, the good weather doesn't come to May, so I don't, I don't, I don't think anybody can answer that, Susan. The question is, do you want to have it now, or do we take it off? You can always put it back. The question is, what do you want to do with it now? Leave it or take it? That's the, that's the issue.
I mean, if it's a case of shoveling the thing out, I'll go down there, shovel the damn thing out. I mean, I, I think that's, that's, that is only.
I mean, if it's a case of shoveling the thing out, I'll go down there, shovel the damn thing out. I mean, I, I think that's, that's, that, that is only getting an excuse to, to do that. I mean, if, if that push comes to shove, Christ, I'll, I'll go shovel and shovel the damn thing out. I mean, that's, that's, I think that's a ridiculous excuse.
But the snow coming off the roof is a danger. I mean, who wants to have some of the snow come off the roof and land on them? And you've got that huge pile, so they've been having to back drag it. It's not a matter of just shoveling. They gotta back drag it out.
That's my understanding.
Right.
That's my understanding. He can't push it through.
It's, it's, the windum's land.
And then the, the question comes though, if, if, if it's a town porta potty, if somebody does get injured from the ice, then, then whose liability is that? I don't know. I don't know where the liability lies there.
You're almost in the march. You've gone through the worst of it.
What's that?
I just said you're almost in the march already. I mean, we've already gone through most of it. I mean, now we're talking about, now that you're gonna, you know, all right, yeah, you've got some snow to deal with now, but pretty soon, I mean, another three weeks and you're gonna have dandelions or naffedels sprouting up in front of the door.
You wish.
You're a little optimistic, Stan.
All right, you know.
But it's not being used.
It's a hundred fifty dollars a month. It's not being used. And, and, and the persons you think it would serve, the store and, and the foundation, they don't care. And in fact, the foundation wants it gone, so.
Joe, can I make a comment?
Sure, go ahead.
Um, it seems like it's on foundation land. The request to remove it came from the foundation who's maintaining the parking lot. Um, the, the snow off the roof is a potential concern. It seems like honoring the request of the foundation um, is, is a courteous thing to do and it may lead to um, getting to have one there in, in the summer if it's needed, but I think you have to honor the fact that it's foundation land that it's on. That's it.
Well, I, I understand and I, and I agree with, I, I, I agree with Alan. However, I, I do understand that, uh, I think as of March tenth, I think the store is, will no longer be a foundation asset. So I don't know if it's the store or the land. I don't know how, what the, what the, the contract is. So perhaps it might not be foundation land anymore. I don't know.
Currently, foundation.
Yeah, it's currently.
But June doesn't want it.
Have any other options been floated besides Town Hall? Is there any, anywhere else that's been suggested?
No, well, no, there isn't really, originally any place we're gonna put it. Uh, you know, you could put, you'd put it on town land, which is right here or at the, well, library even, isn't even our land. The other land is up uh, by um Francis's house. You want to put it up there at the end of the street. I'm sure, I'm sure she'd love that. So, you know, or put it up in the village park or put it down at the other park, but I mean, that was suggested at the beginning and that doesn't do you any good because they're anywhere near town. I did, I don't know.
Well, what we need to do is we, we need to have a motion or something so we can discuss it. I mean, do we want it or do we want to get rid of it? I mean.
I, I think you have to have something, whatever you decide to do with something.
But I, I think one of the problems why it's not being used is that people are using the store.
They're allowing it at the store?
Yeah, yeah. I, I know of people that have used it and they, they say that nobody says a thing.
Well, I mean, that kind of takes care of it.
Right.
I mean, but, but you know, it's they're, they're not coming out and saying that, but I know two people that live here in town that just go in and use it.
And, and June doesn't seem to have a need, well, no. June does not have a need for it. Let's put it that way.
Right.
Somebody want to make a motion? One way or another.
I'll make the motion that we remove the porta potty and revisit it if there's a concern that comes up for a need.
I'll second it.
Any more discussion on the motion? Yeah, I agree, Kathy. I think that's, that's a good, that's a good motion. Uh, because perhaps uh when May comes, things might change. We don't, you know, with the government or with uh, with tourism, so uh, whatever. All right, so there's no further discussion. All in favor of Kathy's motion, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed?
No.
Okay, so we have, we have four to one. Stan opposes the uh removal. Let, let that reflect. Okay. Um, uh, do we have any other business?
I have, I have some if nobody else has.
Well, go ahead.
Um, at the Villa, I, I gave you folks a bunch of information relative to signs. And um, one of them was for a green and white sign grafted in Village Park. Um, routed on a synthetic material that doesn't require maintenance. The cost for that, if you looked at the paperwork that was uh attached or lower down on the image, was two hundred ninety-one dollars and thirty cents for that. Um, is it possible to get permission to order that or does that need to be a special meeting? And uh, can I ask to have it put on a um, an agenda so that it could be discussed and potentially approved?
Well, my, my only concern, Alan, is that we're doing this kind of piecemeal. Um, you know, we're, we're doing a sign and then we're gonna do whether we're gonna have a pavilion or whether we're gonna have this and that. Maybe the, the thing is, is to, since nobody's using the park now anyway, we haven't even started the logging operation. Maybe it's something we ought to just hold off until we actually get going with it and do it all at one time.
If that's your wi- if that's your wishes, I, I guess that's totally.
My wish is just a comment. I mean, I don't know.
I was, I was at the Village Park uh last week with two other townspeople that are um are willing to uh, help uh with work at the park. And actually, there are people using it. Um, the, the snow, there's uh, the snowmobilers are using it. And there's a, quite a well-defined uh snowshoe track. In fact, we met two people snowshoeing out when we went in. So it actually is getting used. And that was another um thing I was meant to ask Danny. Um, at one point, he had it plowed. And I guess that was, my understanding was it would be maintained plowed, but apparently his intention was to plow it just so Mark could get his uh wood out, which he's done, of course.
Um, that wa- that was the only intent for that because it's not a gravelled road, so it's gonna turn to mud.
Yeah, that's, that's kind of what I finally have figured. Um, so anyways, I, I would um make the frame for the sign if I had the sign here and have it ready to put up in the spring. But uh, I guess if you don't want to do that, we can wait.
Can I comment?
Sure.
Um, I like the idea of putting the sign up now. I mean, it's a good PR, letting people know that are coming into town or staying, that we have the park and access it. And they're, and they're using it now and it should be a, you know, four-season park, so.
Just, just for clarification, Kathy, um, I wouldn't, I, I would put the pieces together, but it wouldn't get installed until warm weather and the frost is out of the ground, so. Um, but, but getting, getting the sign produced and then getting the materials and, and then I would have it ready for.
Alan, what, what, Alan, what's the cost, the total cost for the sign?
Uh, he listed at two hundred ninety-one dollars and thirty cents for the, the work that.
But then you got materials.
Well, that, no, that is for them to do a CNC laser cut sign.
Right.
That's the, they have them, they provide the material. The only materials I need would be the pressure treated to build the frame to go around it and some.
But that's in addition to the two ninety.
That's correct.
All right, so what is the total cost?
I, I, I haven't, I haven't got a price for the, for the uh, it would require three six-by-sixes, eight-by-eight foot long, so.
You say?
Maybe a hundred dollars. Huh?
Three hundred fifty dollars will do the whole thing?
Uh, I haven't bought any pressure treated for a while, so I don't know what the value is, but uh, Danny.
Under four hundred.
Four hundred? Let's say four hundred. Can you do it for four hundred?
I think so.
Okay, Kim, you still here?
We, we have nine thousand dollars.
Money in the account for the Village Park. That's my point.
Yeah. Well, we had nine. We spent some money.
Yeah, but I mean, we have four hundred dollars in the account, right?
Yes.
So somebody want to make a motion that we go with the sign and get it going?
Some of.
Motion.
So Kathy said, yeah, and Stan seconded it?
Yep.
All right, so, so the motion is that with, that Alan is gonna proceed with this, with the um sign, whatever you want to call that, that uh.
Entry sign.
Yeah, but I mean, the material of.
Yeah, it's a synthetic.
Yeah, synthetic and then, and along with the, with the pressure treated for the cost, not to exceed four hundred dollars.
Okay.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, good luck.
Okay, I got a couple more things. I got a couple more things if you got time.
Well, we do, but don't. Hurry up, make it quick.
Um, the last I, I was still on the select board, we were talking about getting a computer for Danny and there was money and it was talked about. Did that ever happen?
He's got his computer.
He's got it.
Okay, good. And then the last question is, about two meetings ago, maybe three meetings ago, Joe, you, you kind of um made a point of telling me that there would be a letter going to the folks relative to the streetlights. Did, um, but you said if the select board chose to do that, but I didn't hear any more discussion. Has that ever happened?
I have the letter written. I did not forward it to the board and I will.
Okay, okay, very good. Thank you.
Okay.
Yep.
Any other public comment? If not, um, the date of the next meeting is March first, six P M. And that'll be the last meeting of this, of the, of the whole board. And um, everybody understands that we have the pre town meeting next Monday at six and be via Zoom or Microsoft team, I should say. And um, and I'm, I'm, Kim is not here, but make sure that she knows if you're gonna count the ballots and, and then we'll have the uh organizational meeting will take place um after the votes are counted, so.
Yeah, it'll take place right there.
Right after, yeah, right there at the, at the Brick Meeting House, okay? So um, if not, somebody make a motion to adjourn?
Uh, before we, before you adjourn.
Yep.
Um, I think we need to, thanks, Dan, for all his work on the board. This is your last meeting, right?
No, there's one more.
Well, yeah, last kind of official.
I was gonna save that for the last, but that's okay, Kathy.
Sorry.
That's okay. But no, it looks only, you know, Stan, thank you for your service and, and for the hard work. And I wish you continue with, with overseeing the, or doing something with the wastewater commission so that that, that project continues to go.
We'll move it forward.
Okay. All right, your motion, motion to adjourn?
So.
Second.
All right, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Have a safe week, everybody. We'll see you on, on Monday. Stay safe.
Good eye.
For, for coming.